Good evening. As Chairperson of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the January 21st, 2025 meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are a time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments for the audience will be confined to a time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
De la Junta del 21 de enero 2025, damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La Junta y la Superintendente se complacen de que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como la Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la Junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la Junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la Junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencione sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y aténgase de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es un mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para reunirse con nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de que este sistema escolar, y les damos las gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Before we get to public comment, we are going to first do a celebration, which is my favorite part of these Board meetings, so I will turn that over to Superintendent.
My favorite part as well. Testing, testing? Yes. Good evening, everyone. I am so happy to share. Some of you might know that during this time of year, our seniors are receiving their acceptance letters and financial aid news from colleges, universities, and they are, some of our crafting their plans relative to college, what college they're going to ultimately decide to go to, whether they're going to go into the world of work, the military. And so tonight, we pause to celebrate two students from Weaver High School. Senior Seanovan Reed for being accepted into Columbia University and receiving a full financial support for his college education. He actually shared that he fell in love with Columbia University after visiting New York City when he was a sophomore, and so now he plans to major in creative writing. And so we do have a certificate here for Seanovan. He's no, he can't be here with us tonight. We also celebrate Weaver Senior Cheryl Esk, who is heading to Wesleyan University, and she is here with us tonight. Also receiving a full scholarship to one of our state's top universities. So we want to acknowledge the hard work of our students, our educators, our, all of our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, our families, and the partners that all make this possible for our students. And also calling out Hartford Promise specifically, which is a large-scale college scholarship and college success program specifically supporting our Hartford Public School students, Hartford resident students in their aspirations toward higher education. And we are excited. We're excited because our students are also excited and they can't wait to get on to their journey. And so I'm going to ask Cheryl if you don't mind coming up. And Mom, you can certainly come along and celebrate, and we have a certificate for you. Just want to share that Ms. Cheryl is going to focus on her major's going to be pre-med. So, thank you for sharing that. Back to you, Chairperson.
All right. Congratulations again, Cheryl. Really excited that you were here tonight. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Ms. Drexler Ledger.
We as a Board we as a Board in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, staff will follow up within 48 hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being, adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros como la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del Distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos que se hayan tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la Junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las 48 horas si fuera necesario a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos con este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento, adquiriendo a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con ustedes dentro de las 48 horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto. El segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Our first speaker is Michael Downs.
My name is Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. I attended the, I had an opportunity to attend the January Council Meeting on 13th of January. And I did mention something that I've mentioned at the Board here about the lack of, or the need for vocational technical education and family consumer science. As we are, as a city, our students, our children are way behind in the areas of plumbing, electronics, carpentry, heating and air conditioning, cooking and tailoring. So I did bring that up to the Council because many of the members of the Council don't realize that we don't have these programs. They were taken away 15 to 20 years ago by the state takeover of the Hartford Board of Education as a way of saving money. So evidently, we must have plenty of money around. Now, another area of a source of money is, I noticed in the Hartford News this past week, Councilmember John Gale mentioned that we should strive to put recreation in every school, every school in the system and have an open gym for at least an hour for students after school. And the way it used to run, when I, when I was working back in 1990, 91, 92, is that we'd have an hour, or we'd have maybe 45 minutes to 60 minutes of homework time and then recreation time. And that would give us money that we badly need for after-school, another after-school program. It's possible that there'll be enough money from, Recreation will provide some of their own workers, but they could also hire some of the teachers to work with them after school. Some of the younger teachers that are looking for a little after-school money. And thirdly, I wanted to, well, first of all, I hope that the Board will really consider conferring with the Council on this and see if they can urge them to get some money over to the Board of Education for this program and start this program in the schools. The next thing is the vacancy on the Board. As I've mentioned at the Board several times and also mentioned at the City Council, that there is no city ordinance and no state statute covering a vacancy of an elected member. So the only alternative that we have now is to have a special election, in my opinion. And a special election can be handled quickly and relatively efficiently and inexpensively. And fourth, I noticed there's on the agenda, Agenda Item 4.4, transferring money from the non-lapsing funds of the city. I'm in favor of that. I mean, anytime we can get more money, plus we have to cover bills that we incurred last year. And let's get them out of the way if we can. Thank you.
Carol Gale.
Good evening, members of the Board, student representatives, and Superintendent. My name is Carol Gale. I am a Hartford resident and president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. First, I would like to welcome the student representatives. Your voice is very important, and your reports to the Board of Ed provide a necessary bridge between the student perspective in our schools and the policies that the Board sets forth. So we certainly look forward to your contributions. On tonight's agenda is a report on a proposal to create a teacher advisory council, much like the student advisory council. Notes from your January 9th special meeting indicate that there were many questions as to what a teacher advisory council would look like. For example, I believe Ms. Brody asked about how this would work in practice. So I'm here to offer some suggestions and in some ways model what could happen if you actually had people doing this at regular Board meetings. So let me start by asking you to recognize what it looks like to your certified staff to watch Board of Ed meetings that are inclusive of the student voice, which is awesome, but absence of an educator voice. We feel left out because we are. I have asked for educator input to the Board of Ed since before I became president of the HFT, and I will continue to do so. What it can look like at the simplest level is a few school-based staff who engage regularly in providing input to the Board. The most likely place for this to occur is in committee meetings, in line with comments made by Ms. Hockenhall at the special meeting. The district is always looking for ways to retain staff by offering leadership opportunities. This is one such perfect opportunity. Not all certified staff seek leadership in administration. Some would love the opportunity to engage in policy. Committing to attending Board of Ed committees could be part of their professional development plan, tailored to their individual growth plan as outlined in the new teacher evaluation process. Professional development does not have to occur on scheduled PD days by the district, nor can the district provide all the individualized professional development needed by our staff. Why can't members of this advisory council attend 5:00 PM Board of Ed meetings instead of the Wednesday afternoon professional learning? This could also address Ms. Drexler Ledger's concerns about the timing of such a group, considering the already rigorous schedules of teachers, and we thank you for that question. We are salaried professionals after all, and professional learning time doesn't interfere with student instruction. All it takes is a little thinking outside the box and trusting our staff to be the professionals that they are. Another question was also asked to consider the existing systems. To my knowledge, those would include things like PTOs, SGCs, Union School Committees, and public comments. Of those, only the public comments directly reach the Board of Education. And those are, as we know, limited to three minutes, which I'm almost out of. And they're at the 11th hour because it's usually when things are already on the agenda. The other vehicles are all school-based, and there's no Board of Ed members present at those. Mr. Tatum also raised questions about the policy implications of such a move. I argue that staff input would be no different on a policy level from central office staff who regularly attend Board of Ed committee meetings. They are, after all, employees, the same as our school-based staff. They offer input and answer questions, and they don't vote. Similarly, our school-based staff could do the same. Attend the meetings, offer input, answer questions, don't vote, but provide a school-based perspective. The logistics can certainly be worked out. What is needed first is the will to be inclusive and approve the creation of some sort of a teacher advisory council. Thank you.
Mike Susi.
Yes, the guy from public comment. So I want to do a couple of things. I'm going to go, my normal banter I'll take care of next month. But I want to do a couple of things. One is I want to say congratulations to you, Ms. Christina. She was a former student of mine as a sophomore, and you made me earn my money. She's one of the most conscientious students I've ever had and very vocal about her grade. And I know that you'll be very vocal here, and you'll represent our school very well. So, one of the things I wanted to address though is, as a social studies teacher, I saw about the Financial Literacy, I know that started this year. That course, I think that's really great to do. I wish I had it. The one thing in there is that it's taught to freshmen, and on this packet, it doesn't say it, but in the packet that was sent out through Ms. Santiago, it said it was effective for the class of 2027, which would be this year's sophomores. So I just want clarity when you guys discuss it. The business section is, what does that mean for the sophomores? If they're supposed to have that credit when they graduate and they're not having the class, is it going to be something that they do through ingenuity? Is it going to be, is there going to be like a section next year or the year after where specifically the kids will take that Financial Literacy class? Because once again, I think it's something that's really important for the kids. And I just hope that either one, it gets moved back to where it's 2028, and then with the option for the kids that are graduating in 2027 to be able to take it, or if, you know, what the plan is for that. And then lastly, I think this is like the one time that I've actually like gone way under time. But, so, but the last thing I want to say is, you know, I was really happy to see the Superintendent in our school today. She acknowledged, you know, she thanked the people from my school, the SSO specifically, and Ms. Stevens about, you know, the passing of Ms. Irving in our school and the extraordinary measures that those individuals displayed on that day. And you were able to hear some of the stories from those people. However, what I did hear is that, so in our school, we like to do like March Madness and stuff like that. So to get the kids excited during specifically March because there's no days off. And I did hear that the Superintendent was interested in playing in that. So, hey, you go talk to, you talked to Mr. Mills, the soccer, the teachers. We were not that good at soccer, so, but I will come out next month and I guess start recruiting. So, I think it would be really cool. We were talking about after that in ours, with this, with some of the, with the teacher who does organize this stuff. And it would be really cool if we came up with like a Board of Ed Central Office Team. Just saying. Just take that under consideration.
And our last speaker, John Walton.
Good evening, Superintendent and distinguished Board members. I'm so happy to see the student Board members here. This brings joy to me because this Board is actually paying attention to the things that we actually say up here, which is really important. I'll just introduce myself to you as your neighbor. I live in this community with your parents and yourselves, and I have a child who attends Hartford Public Schools. So the mood in this room seems very light. I'm assuming everybody had good holidays. And we just got off the heels of celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King, which is one of my heroes, but specifically his wife, Coretta Scott King, is one of my top heroes because of her efforts in support of her husband's work for his people and his community. Even when she rejected the FBI's attempts to undermine his work with character assassinations. So I really appreciate that Coretta Scott King stood by Dr. Martin Luther King, even though as leaders we make mistakes. So why do I say that? Dr. King, if many people attribute to Dr. King his speech about "I have a dream", which one of his, they say is one of his greatest speeches. It was, and I've mentioned this before, so it's worth repeating. But it was when Martin Luther King actually gave a speech to the Senate and the Congress about the redistribution of wealth in our society. Because he had realized that we had already gotten to the civil rights. He had accomplished that. And in his last interviews before his death, he said, "I feel like I've led my people into a burning building." Because he had accomplished civil rights, but without economic redistribution or equality. Civil rights really came secondary because people need that hand up in order to exercise their civil rights through economics. So why do I say that? Well, like Dr. Martin Luther King, I've been asking for reform. And the Superintendent, and I appreciate this Board and the Superintendent asking and allocating for more money to the state. We all need that. So we're all on board with that, and I appreciate your efforts in that. But Dr. Martin Luther King realized that when he asked for change in this country, he got change in the form of racial equality to some degree. But the systems didn't change. And here we are, I'm saying that now, is we saw a difference in who's employed as a supervisor. We saw a difference and we saw equitable employment of different cultures and backgrounds in management supervision. But what we didn't see is system change. That didn't occur, and that's why I've come up here so many times to echo the same things I keep echoing and echoing over and over again, because the system hasn't changed. You'll hear me speak in generalities because that's what I do. The professionals that I'm associated with, they give you the logistics. So I appreciate President Downs, who was absolutely right. Them after-school programs with sports and industrial educations helped save my life. Will help save many other youth's lives because they won't be on the streets committing crimes because they have an opportunity to economically solve some of their problems. And you've also heard from President Carol Gale, who talks about the logistics of having a seat at the table in order for us to help create policy. But we still come back to, at least in operations, the fact that we're still doing the same old, same old. Yeah, we changed the people, and we're changing the people. And I'm so happy to see that we have a new COO who is coming aboard. I hope he is not influenced by the one that is leaving, no disrespect. But we need change. We need to move the ball down the field. And with that, we need to stop building the roof. And when I say roof, we need to stop building from the top. Because if you notice, Superintendent and to the Board, the positions that got filled in facilities or management positions, or you're not going to have a hard time filling those. They pay well. The guys don't have to do anything basically, but identify a problem. Because cleverly, in the old days, management was able to structure a situation where they don't have to work. They just have to identify problems. Well, we have enough people who can identify problems. We need some actual people who can do some work. You know, some actual supervisors who have a work and administrative position, not just an administrative position to say, "Hey, that needs to be cleaned", or "That needs to be fixed", or we all know that. Who's going to do it? So it's easy to fill positions from the top because they pay well and you don't have to do much. Or in food service where you find somebody who comes and they say, "I remember having a meeting", and we said, "Well, we would like our food service department", and these are your lunch ladies and your lunch guys and the people who are the lowest-paid people in Hartford Public Schools that help you through your day by giving you nutrition. nutrition. When we said, "They need uniforms." Well, you know what we were told in that meeting? I don't get a uniform. Now that person makes probably 25, $30,000 a year in, in my union. The person who said that to me probably makes upwards of 180. So with that type of attitude, you can see how prioritization went wrong. And that's why you can't fill the small positions because that redistribution that Martin Luther King talked about, we're not talking about redistribute wealth, well, we're talking about redistribute opportunities and power and, and, and even salaries to some degree, right? To say, "Let's make it, let's make it worth people coming to actually do the work and do away with all the supervision and, and, and start getting away from that." Why should we have, in your facilities department, you have 15 tradesmen right now currently, and you have two supervisors plus a director to supervise 15 people that get paid six figures from the taxpayers? Not acceptable. What's also not acceptable, and I will say this, the two new directors, we're giving them an opportunity. There's some bright spots there. So we're giving them opportunity to see how well they do long-term. They are doing a fairly good job short-term, but long-term, we should not be giving any of our departments, food service or facilities, a blank check of taxpayer money to outsource the work. And that's what we have been doing. And if we continue to do that, then we will bankrupt, at least in operations, we will be forced in this community to it, to be outsourcing all of this work and spending a ton of money doing it and it will cost you a fortune and it will add to the deficit. I'm sorry I went over my time, I appreciate the time. I had some other talking points, but I'll be back next month and you guys have a good evening.
As always, thank you everybody for coming out tonight and giving public comment. We always appreciate hearing what you have to say. Thank you very much. All right, we're now going to move on to the report of the chair. I'm very excited that I get to start by welcoming, as many people already have, our Superintendent Student Advisory Council Student Board Representatives. I am thrilled that you are here. Thank you so much for your willingness to join our board and put in the work. It won't be easy, but it will be worth it and we're really excited to have you. So to announce who we have, we have Ms. Christina Jackson, who is the president from Hartford Public High School and she's a senior. We have Ms. Kiara Hill, who is our vice president and she is from Classical Magnet and is a junior. We have McQuandre Wright, who is the secretary from Buckley High School and she is a junior. And Tosh Brown, who is a treasurer and she's from Buckley High School and she is a sophomore. I will let them introduce themselves when they do their report, but again, thank you for being here, so, so excited that you're here. All right. Now I have boring updates compared to that. So I will go on to, not boring, just kidding. The Blue Ribbon Commission on Education update, so the Blue Ribbon Commission members received a draft of their report in early January. This report should be finalized and available to the public by the end of January. I encourage those who are interested in learning more to visit the website where you can find agendas, meeting recordings and meeting materials at HartfordBlueRibbon.com. The strategic plan continues to move forward. We are now in phase two. A survey is now available, and this is a new survey, is now available as we begin to fine-tune the plan. You can find the survey and additional information online at HartfordSchools.org. I'm going to thank everybody who's participated so far. There's been surveys, focus groups, in-person gatherings, so we're really grateful that you took time to provide your feedback. The contributions from phase one and phase two will be synthesized into the final three-year strategic plan and the board will have a chance to review and provide final feedback at the next retreat scheduled for January 30th. And the plan is that the board will then vote on that strategic plan at the February And on to the Legislative and Advocacy Task Force update. So the board convened the Legislative and Advocacy Task Force, which has now met twice via Zoom, which were livestreamed and recorded. The task force spent time learning about the upcoming legislative session, legislative advocacy, legislative and advocacy goals of other agencies supporting education throughout the state and the district's goals. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 23rd. We look forward to the, we look forward to working towards the collective goals of advocating for our students at Hartford Public Schools. The board has been actively working to fill the vacant elected board position and we have narrowed it down to several finalists. This process included a public call for applications, which is open, which was open for over a month and we did receive 17 applications in total. A review of all application, all applications by the full board and executive session earlier this month and tonight will include interviews of our top five candidates in executive session. The next steps will include deliberations by the board, potential follow-up interviews and a vote at the February 2025 full board meeting. We do look forward to rounding out our board with the new members soon and we're grateful for all the applicants and their enthusiasm to serve on the Hartford Board of Education. And we have made it clear to the applicants that they will be required to receive the endorsement from the DTC. We're not, we are not making any, any guarantees, thank you, this is why I read a script, we don't make any guarantees to the nominee that we do put in place and they will have to run at the November election this year. This month, the board met in two committee of the whole meetings where we reviewed proposal for a teacher advisory council, heard from the Hartford Promise and their incredible achievements, the district's legislative priorities and emerging, emerging strategic plan priorities. We also had a policy committee where the board continued to discuss the school renaming policy and pets in the classroom policy. Lastly, at this month's workshop meeting, the board engaged in the 2025-2026 budget development process. For anyone interested in the budget process, I would highly encourage you to watch the January 2025 workshop meeting and board docs. It was a very informative session and we look forward to continuing budget discussions in February. The February 2025 committee meetings will include an update on the Hartford Principal Leadership Academy scheduling update, continued policy discussions around the school renaming and teacher advisory committee and the superintendent's mid-year evaluation check-in among other topics. As a reminder, you will find the superintendent's report, full committee reports, student reports, all attachments and videos in the meeting's agenda on board docs. All committee and workshop meetings are livestreamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda on board docs. I highly encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at CSantiago@HartfordSchools.org. We will now move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. I have several updates. One is celebrating student leadership. 10 students from Buckley High School's Emerging Technology Pathway took time out of their busy schedules and they visited two school, Naylor and Caneli schools to run the Hour of Code activities with our younger learners while sharing their experiences and expertise with computer science. Some of you might know that the Hour of Code is a worldwide event that aims to introduce millions of students to computer science through one-hour coding activities and so our elementary students got a glimpse into the future, if you will, future opportunities at, at the community from their peers at the high school level and of course, our Buckley students displayed their leadership and their intersectionality in terms of their computer science knowledge and what it means to give in terms of their community service. So I wanted to highlight our student leaders and relative to, and I know that chairperson talked about the Legislative Advocacy Task Force. I did want to mention that there was a press conference, a press event where the fig, the five big cities came together, the mayors and the superintendents, Bridgeport, Hartford, New Haven, Stanford and Waterbury, coming together to urge our lawmakers to increase education funding, particularly with a focus on our high-need students. We highlighted challenges like teacher vacancies, resource shortages and the rising costs, emphasizing the need for more equitable funding for students that live in concentrated poverty areas, students with disabilities, multilingual learners, and we called for greater state investment in education and flexibilities in what you probably have heard, the fiscal guardrails, so that our students can be better supported. Followed by that press conference, we did have a meeting with our delegation and members of the education committee and so Dr. Jennifer Hoffman and Chairperson Hockenhall and myself met with committee members and we focused on the need for increased financial support for students, specifically around special education programming discussions. And these were, I would say, Chairperson Hockenhall, I think you, you would agree, given our, our debrief after, that they were conversations that were really informed, two-way conversations, highly engaging conversations with lots of questions from our elected officials about the challenges in Hartford Public Schools for students, for families and for our educators. And we emphasized, right, the importance of addressing the funding gaps, particularly for our high-need populations and we talked about potential ideas. I know that Representative Khan, for example, who is chairing a committee, a special education committee, is looking to have follow-up conversations with us to really understand what the challenges look like, sound like and feel like here in Hartford Public Schools. And lastly, I will highlight that we did get communication from the Magnet Schools of America, awards for schools that have been recognized for schools of distinction. And so we had schools on the list and so I just want to highlight who they are. Annie Fisher Montessori Magnet School, Annie Fisher Stem Magnet School, Breakthrough Magnet North, Breakthrough Magnet South, Classical Magnet, Gray Path Academy and Noah Webster Microsociety Magnet School. There is a criteria and schools get rated based on specific criteria and so I just wanted to highlight the hard work that is happening across all of those schools and congratulations to them on a job well done. That concludes my report.
Thank you Superintendent. We will now move on to the report of the student representatives. Ms. Jackson?
My first time doing this, so cool. Okay. Hi everyone, I'm Christina Jackson. I am a senior at Hartford High and I am the newly appointed president of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council and it is my second school year being a part of the council. What else do I have to say? I felt like it was really important for me to be a member of this council because we were given an opportunity to... We were given a unique opportunity to have a seat at the table and to, right to the source, communicate our issues and our wants.
Testing? Okay. Hi, my name is McQuandre Wright. I'm a junior at Buckley High School and I just wanted to say, I'm here to give a different perspective, the perspective of the students. I want my peers' voices and opinions to be heard and I just want to make a change from the inside.
So here's our report. So far, we've had two meetings together, the most recent one being the 14th. Our group is filled with some of the smartest and creative minds of our Hartford youth and we have wants, needs and many aspirations for our district. Every single student in the council cares about our community and wants to see it flourish. First, I'll start with our December 12th meeting recap. During this meeting, it was all about introductions. Although there were many returning council members this year, we also got a lot of new faces. During this meeting, we were able to do a couple icebreakers and get to know each other better. We also got a presentation from Nick Caruso from CAE on board training where we got to learn a little bit about the budget and some of the restrictions and challenges that our superintendent has to face when, when trying to make up for the deficit in our budget. Here's some things we talked about during the open dialogue of this session. Inconsistent reprimands from staff, which is unclear policies. We want more teachers who care. If you don't believe in what our district is striving to be, or you don't see the vision, you aren't needed here. We want more program, programming that will prepare us for life after high school. This means financial literacy classes at every Hartford school. Our school climates are not the best on a consistent basis and some kids like the supports better at certain neighborhood schools, but they aren't an option to them because of school zones. Now on to our January 14th meeting recap. During this meeting, we had a jam-packed day. This meeting day, we had our election where different students pitched themselves as leadership and our leadership team was created. We also got to see two different presentations, one from our deputy, from one of our deputy superintendents, Dr. Conjer Ratley and Caitlin Richards CFO. In Ms. Richards' presentation, we got an update for next year's budget and in Dr. Ratley's presentation, we gave our own definitions to the different categories that our survey results are put into and provided our feedback on the strategic plan. The superintendent also helped facilitate and heard our voices during this process. Here's some facts that stood out to us from the finance update presentation. A large portion of our budget is for tuition to send Hartford students to crack schools. The amount of money that we make as a district isn't going up as much as we spend and we still have a deficit of $30 million. Schools receive funding based on the equity-based starter budget formula. And here's some things we talked about during Dr. Ratley's activity work. We talked about the district's three-year and 10-year plan. We talked about how we want more teachers in our community that live in our community and understand our circumstances, our influx of East Soul students and how much support they need. We talked about how we need more opportunities for collaborations with students from other Hartford schools, updates to our curriculum, AP classes and opportunities that will allow us to compete on an academic level with our peers from more white communities. Here's some positives from both meetings. We felt more connected as Hartford students. We got to interact way more with the superintendent, which is amazing because this is something we wanted more of last year. We are constantly learning how our district works and we have fun things planned for the council at the end of the year, which makes everyone feel good. Now I would like to share with you all a proposal of an idea that I talked a little bit about with my dad and I pitched to the council and it's something that we are going to be working on as we go on. What if the high schools in Hartford were treated like a college campus? All of our schools, both neighborhood and magnet, have pathways or focuses. Weaver has journalism and finance pathways, Hartford High has allied health and engineering pathways and S M S A has a sports and medical focus. What if Hartford students had the choice of going to any campus they wanted to? That way, a student who wants to be an artist doesn't get stuck with having to choose from studying engineering or healthcare and they could be a dancer at concella. If we get rid of the school zones and market ourselves differently, we could get everyone from our community back into our schools. It's way more appealing as a student or even a parent if you could look at the HPHS website and go, "Maybe I should go to the School of Business or the School of Law." That way, schools would still receive funding for students who go there, but we are still given the gift of choice. So as a summary, both meetings so far have given the SSAC the opportunity to share out what's going on in our schools and learn more about the district's financial status and we are excited to keep learning and collaborating with each other within the council. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. We will now move on to the agenda. This month, there are no contracts for the board to approve and the items on the consent agenda are 4.2, second reading and adoption of the graduation policy for the financial literacy credit, 4.3, first reading of pets in the classroom policy, 4.4, approval of a budget transfer, and this was discussed in the December 2024 Finance Committee meeting, and 4.5, approval of the minutes from the December 17th, 2024 meeting. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? No, seeing none. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Chair, my only comment is, if I can be heard, my, my only comment is-
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Chair, my only comment is, if I can be heard, my only comment is around 4.2 and whether there's the need to have it read so that the policy that's being adopted is understood by the public. Do we? Have we never?
But to that point, we would, Deputy Foster, we can have Deputy Foster come up and speak to the question from Mr. Cici earlier.
And thank you. And thanks for the correction because I think in the past, there was someone, I'm thinking of, in the past, someone would actually summarize, here's what the policy is about.
So specifically, you want me to just address the question around existing high school students and the program of studies? Yeah. So, right, when we, this is a state requirement, right? So we have to put this into our policies and into our graduation requirements. Per the state law, it applies starting with the class of twenty-seven, which is current sophomores. And so that does put us in a position where we have current high school students who haven't met this requirement, who are either freshmen or sophomores. It's also true that when the academic department did their survey, we had schools that already offered financial literacy. We had schools that offered economics courses. So part of what the academic office did was define the course, take the existing microeconomics course, which I believe was taught at two of our high schools, make that a half-credit microeconomics and financial literacy course. And then they're working to then bring that course to all of the high schools. And so that course won't necessarily be a ninth-grade-only course, but it could vary across the high schools. So there will be a plan to ensure that all current high school students have the opportunity to take that course. Well, certainly, ninth and tenth grade high school students will have the opportunity to take that course before graduation. That'll be part of the rollout plan for the requirement.
Thank you. Ms. Fortune, did you have a question?
No, thank you. I think Deputy Foster addressed everything. One of the questions that was brought up during public comment was addressing this for freshman students and trying to push it to 2028, which is not something that we can do because the law requires that it applies to class of 2027 and future classes. And what we've done on a discretionary basis is choose to add that one-half credit requirement to the social studies curriculum and increasing that curriculum by one-half credit. And it reduces, I believe it's the elective portion.
Yeah, it reduces the elective within the humanities block.
The elective by one-half credit. So that's where we chose to house that additional requirement.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Deputy. All right. Do I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? All right. The ayes have it. All right. The last item on the agenda is executive session, filling vacancy on the Board of Education. We will be going into executive session to discuss filling the vacancy of the Board of Education. We will be taking with us Christina Santiago. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? All right. The ayes have it. There will be no further work in front of the public after this. So thank you for joining us this evening, and we look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you.